With our middle school to kind of talk about. We've done a lot of talking in ASB about developing students' sense of belonging. And it started in middle school ASB and has kind of carried into high school. And I know you guys heard from Presley Hall eight a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted them to come and share some of the cool things that they're putting in motion to include all students. But we are going to start with our awesome middle school students.
Hi guys.
Good evening.
Um, hi guys. Leadership. But um.
You guys wanted to share your names, introduce yourself to.
My name's Amy. S. A. I. Nice one. Okay. Okay, so um. First, I'm gonna start off with some of the like things that we. And the first.
So. So in our leadership class, we did personality tests to see everyone's personality. And then we did activities to see how different personalities and the same personalities work together. And it kind of showed that different personalities look better than people with the same personalities.
Yeah. And we do these things, like we do these kind of bonding based and they start one semester with leadership because they um leadership is all sense of bonding. And it helps us work better together throughout the semester so that we can do bigger things for our school. And um our next topic that we'll cover is our. School. It's so it's not like money, but it's like. But it's ran by our ASB officers. And um our goal is to have it up and running by one quarter. And um. We've. Uh we've had some donations from. From the Pacific. Other just like local places that have like items up in town and money donation. And uh our store will consist of like not buying things with their money, but earning tickets from the beginning of school. And um. I think that our store and having that will. Allow students to be able to be nice to each other and treat each other with like kindness and respect with an award. And the more that kids show that, the more it's gonna affect on our students at our school. And by having this store, it's gonna leave a really big impact and work on our upcoming leadership officers and students. So, yeah. And um the last thing we will agree with our leadership. Is just our fundraising stuff, our fundraising communities because we got funding our communities a couple of days ago. And all of our communities are right now fundraising ideas for fundraisers for things like. Money.
Yes, speakers.
Always need money.
Student incentives, student celebrations.
Yeah, those things for like assemblies and I mean just, yeah, just funds. And like if like we have like a great fundraiser and stuff, those those money will go to like. And um my next topic that we'll cover is our.
Uh energy.
Yeah. Yes. Um it was a brilliant experience. It was really great and I really. I don't think I got to experience that because I never thought that I would like come that far.
And part of what they're gonna be fundraising for too is to send a middle school ASB to CISPAS. And so what we really want to do is have all secondary leadership, six through 12, have that experience. So we're developing a through line student sense of belonging across all of secondary. So they'll be going to CISPAS this summer too.
And um my plan to move forward from that, which is. I want to start like. So I think like what would you like to do? Like our main job right now, we're working on a budget obviously. And um. Fundraising stuff, the whole thing. And I just wanna like, like. Besides those, I like put it out so that one, it can be more successful. And two, why you went to my school, it could be like at the school and not just something that happened during my certain time as a basement. And um. By the end of the year, I. I I want our store to be a good success and I want it to be passed on to our next class. And um I just want my like. I think it's like goal that I want in leadership is to have like students either in my group or like. To ask me about like any like activities that they have or any goals or just like general stuff like that. And I'll be able to answer that because that's that was like my main goal, but I became. Be able to ask me anything, so I can have a good outlook for that. That's that's great. If like. Excellent. So. How are you doing today?
We've been talking about something where they said, we do want to bring in a guest speaker. Specifically in our executive teams reflection and our leadership classes reflection. We noticed that a common problem that we have within our school is our school culture. People don't want to be there and so the culture is generally negative. And you'll you'll get to experience that when you go through that day in life, you'll see people in the hallway. You'll see the environments and classrooms and how feel how safe people feel in those environments. But one of the things that we want to to fix that this morning, we paid $10,000 for a motivational speaker. And as you put, um the package that we got will not only go to a two day assembly at the high school. They'll they'll come to the middle school and they'll talk to our staff because we just figured that something in our environment is is wrong. And so the only way to fix that is to change the whole mind. Um another thing that I wanted to touch on was Tolo. This home mentioned that we wanted to be more inclusive with everything. When we went to CISPAS, we found out that, well, I I went to CISPAS. I found out that we are a 70% loan control issue. And for some reason, I didn't know that. And I feel like that's not something that we make very well known, like we have free lunches and everything like that. But it's not something that you see in every day because obviously that's not something that's talked about in high school or in in my. Um but we decided that we wanted to make things more accessible to people. Because like a lot of our after school activities and clubs and sports aren't accessible to some of the students because they have to ride the bus or they have a job back in school. And there's just like things that they can't do to become part of our school. There's nothing for them to belong in. So we're looking for more things to help them belong, making things more accessible to everyone. And we're starting with Tolo. We started this last year as a dance. It's just another dance, another fundraiser. But this year, we decided that we wanted to make Tolo free for all students. Just because sometimes that fee to get in or the thought of buying a dress or a tux or something like that is just so nerve acting. And it's so stress inducing for so many students. So our theme is actually vintage this year, dress it up, dress it down, or bow bottom jeans, whatever you want. But we just want students to feel safe and able to belong in our school. Because once you feel like you belong, that makes it so much easier, happy to be there. Our main goal for this year is for students to want to be there. It's it's hard when you don't want to be somewhere. Everybody wakes up and they're like, oh, my gosh, I have to go to school. I hate school. But if people want to be there, if we make things easy for them, if we make things fun for them, they'll want to be there. And hopefully that will improve the negative.
And I just want to say, this was born out of their experience at CISPAS and talking to students. And I mean, all the students across every group of kids. And so all of this has truly been student led. And um I'm just really impressed because if we can get to that place across all of secondary, it's just gonna be so fantastic for every one of our kids. So really impressed with both ASBs.
Thank you.
I really like the approach on you want to have everybody included and involved. And then you're making active decisions to make, look at the specific barriers that are keeping students from. Do you know if we could have, I want us to hear about the success on it. Well, how would you measure the success? What do you think would be a good successful sign of Tolo?
Uh we generally measure by attendance numbers. Last year, we showed capacity. It wasn't that bad. It wasn't nothing. It wasn't.
I mean, it wasn't great, but.
We were, we were assuming we're still in Tolo specifically.
Hang on, these meetings are recorded. I don't know if.
I'm still releasing to the library today for for the store. But we have 400 students in attendance and we have a total of like about 600 students in our school. So yes, that includes like students who fill out the form to come from like the different schools. Once they fill out that form, that's not like they're mature. But 400 students out of 600 is a big increase in a lot of the things that we've seen with most of our activities. And considering that it's an after school, out of school hours, like activity that people went out of their way to come to was a really big achievement uh last year. And so we're hoping for a year on, so we just why are we open the library for sale? But it'll be that that's actually meant to be more. Like get overstimulated during dances or maybe it's just not enough space. Uh we're going to open the library and include board games and some snacks. And we're gonna open our our store, the early bird from the late bird to the front. And it's just, it's gonna be some ways that people can relax through it. So more people feel safe and comfortable going to our dances, being part of that, like that community, socializing, like bonding with people in our school district. But like being able to be there without having to commit or like people who go to dances and then they leave after 10 minutes. Yeah. Uh because it's it's really overwhelming. It is a lot, especially for like underclassmen, people who are new. It's just, it's a lot. So we we recognize that and we wanted to make it more accessible to people who might not be as comfortable socially.
That's great news. Will you give us an update on how it goes? Question about the store. Kind of stuff you plan to have in the store, ideas that students are gonna get. Money um like a like a like a eagle dollars.
Yeah.
Or how we're dealing with it. Just want to be clear. Now, my daughter, when she was, my youngest daughter was, she's an actress now. I was in elementary, but we used to like she needs to save all her money and come home with weird Play-Doh toys. And I'd be like, I need to buy some stickers or pencils for kids. But what kind of stuff do you plan on selling?
So when we first came up with the idea of our store, we. So like um some of our initiatives we have right now, we're obviously gonna have like snacks. So that happened and um we had ideas on. Just like. Middle school would actually enjoy, want to like. Speak like better to earn those things.
Tell me about how you earn your dollars, your eagle dollars. What are you calling them? Eagle dollars, eagle bucks?
Eagle bucks.
Eagle bucks? So have you mapped out how you, students earn their eagle bucks?
So our plan was to, I'm sure. Our staff, our teachers, they play. Things um and then they will be able to give those out to students based on their.
It's a great idea as far as showing this level report. I'm getting curious on how you'll kind of create your dollar value on like. Not like it was a curious line, is whose line is it anyway?
It's uncharacteristic right now. But um going back to the story, that was um. Please wait. All this, what why is this supposed to?
Supposed. So um. Everybody. There are two Hilltop Middle Schools. Uh one is in Waco and wants a coma. And we ended up in coma. Uh I was in it. And luckily for us, the vice president there was fantastic and she regarded the officers on a tour. And we were in contact with admins, so don't worry, the adults knew where we were. And he actually gave them my this idea for the store. That's how their school runs a behavior program. And so, yeah, so he gave him a tour, showed them the idea. And then for the rest of our day, as we hang back and did our now this better faith training. Uh they came up with the idea for the store and then we tiers to um the reward system. But we learned it from a middle school.
I think the best ideas always come from emergent, emergent people. So it's. Do you have questions? And then the students don't have to say what we need because we need to do a lot of our buckets in the last week. This will be a long. We left about two meetings later content. And I can make it go later.
So Lisa, I'm. Yeah, so you have our school board members. Raise your hand. So these are basically our personality test that we present to us and they're fun. So.
Our challenge was to equal, make your personality test and then come back as a group and see how you match up against each other.
Yeah, that's fine. Guys, give us.
It's actually funny that this came out because I just went to leadership training last week and a big part of it was personality test. How to work with different people based on.
We'll see if you're just wanna like.
Thanks again for presenting. I really appreciate you guys getting to talk.
Okay, I sent you guys a. A very good chart. Sorry. This chart with some of the quotes I've already gotten, things like that. Basically, I want to come talk to you guys today. We have, we have a lingering issue with ropes. In 2005, we did many ropes in the district. Um and then we are beginning to see some failures on those ropes. So. That's uh. That's something that we need to stay on top of because our our buildings are gonna be here for a long time. Can I think? The last bond ask we did, we kind of gotta feel from the community that they're probably not going to be wanting to start building new buildings. Uh so therefore, we need to put money into the buildings. And then our ADA compliance, we have several issues with that. Uh that's, these are all big ticket items. So I I feel like we're leading up to a point where we can do either capital projects levy or involve to re-rope every building, get in compliance with ADA.
Emily, you have photos and stuff.
I do. I have a PowerPoint. Um so I don't know when Jeff's done, if you want me to share what I brought.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's just, it's just, it's a glitch. It's just a glaring thing. I mean, like every time it comes up. Oh, yeah, I am sorry. There it is. Like it's not. It does need to be fair. Um and then we also have like the clean buildings act. I mean, down the pipe, it's a little ways out, but it's it's very real. And uh and that has to do with high efficiency stuff. Eventually, it's gonna be pushing away, pushing us away from the task. And so I just, these are just things for the future that we need to start making a plan to attack. Um and then the blacktop surfaces, the elementary playground. We'll make that into sewer. There's many uneven surfaces. Our parking lots out here are starting to degrade. Um so that would be another part of of the. Like I think we need to just do a thing to like invest money into our buildings.
And we're about the bottom third of levy or I think tax rate out of the EST, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when you realize that we're equivalent to North Beach. Is that rate is applied to hotels and our rate is applied to residential properties. It means it comes to total dollars that comes back into the district, which is pretty low. So I think I can show you when I get to our data, I'll show you what we get per student. Uh we do pretty well when it comes to lunches and like non-instructional. We'll talk about like where we are. Like I'll show some of our dashboard data. But do you mind uh? Listing the money, this one thing, Emily, do you mind? Is Eric have it?
What's that?
Is Eric have it?
Yes, you're ready for it.
Do you mind showing us?
Yeah.
So with parent permission, I um we have a student who is in a wheelchair. And the parent said, I said, I want to present about what's not accessible to your student. And they said, of course, recorder, share what you need to. So um on this page, so in order to get from the main building, like the commons, so Emily Severs has the ornamental design, plant science. And so I have quite a few kids who take her classes because they're amazing. Um but in order to get to her classes, they have to go out the commons to the high school parking lot, around through the rocks and back into the building. And so this video will show you. So I'm sorry, it takes a while, but this is reality. This is how she gets to her classes each day. I think if you click on it, it might make it full screen. You might hear her teasing me like, oh, my battery is gonna die. You gotta push me. And that's another thing. So like if the battery does die, like this wheelchair is very heavy. Um and we would have to push her to get her to class. It's okay if it doesn't. I mean, she only teased me a little bit and then she stopped. Um. Yeah. She's a fun one to be with. Uh but yeah, so it'll take a few minutes because it takes a lot to get there.
Takes even longer when it's not sunny.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and that's that's a big thing. Um so when she gets down to the bottom, um one of my little notes is, so was it like last week or the week before when it was really icy out? There were times where um going around this corner up here, her chair slipped. And if there wasn't a staff member with her, her chair would have tipped. And so we just have to be really careful in certain areas because it's not safe. Um like if she turns the corner too sharp, um right here, there's some loose rocks. And uh sometimes her chair gets rough, but that's where it gets really icy. So on those days when she went to turn the corner, um I was with her one time. And then the pairs are usually with her, but it's um it can be very unsafe for her to get around these corners because of um the slope. And then we have another student who is, um there's times where she has to use a walker. And so if she goes this long path, by the time she gets to class, she is so tired that she may put her head down and she may have to take a little rest because she's exhausted from having to walk all the way around. Um so she'll put her head down. And Mrs. Evers phenomenal. Um she is so accommodating um for these kids. Like she knows they're gonna get there late. She knows they may need a little rest because of being tired from their truck down there. But yeah, we're almost there. And then this is just from the commons to the classroom. And I don't know if you guys have, I'm sure you've bought in the beautiful plants from the plant science class. Um so they do a lot of work down in the greenhouse. And so. Um this is just pointing out where the the rocks are very loose and we really gotta watch her chair on those. So. Um so getting in there late to class, I mean, this student is amazing. She has, you know, a good sense of humor and stuff. But I mean, a lot of students, she's getting late to class every single day because this takes longer than the four minutes of allotted time to get there. Um and then staff, so if her chair does die and staff have to push her, like that's, there's staff who, you know, get bad backs and they physically can't do this on a regular basis. And so um and just being careful that she doesn't tip over. So we don't have to replace the wheelchair um because of the facilities we got. Um so this next video clip. Hopefully it'll pop up. Um this is going from the classroom to where they have the, to the greenhouses where they do the um plant science stuff. So this one is, she goes out the classroom, they go through the shop. Um again, we have phenomenal staff members. Um Lisa Mayberry is one of them. She works to make sure, because they go through the shop. So she works really hard to make sure that there's no like hoses out or any equipment out that could stop her from getting where she needs to be. So they go through the shop. I mean, kids will be kids, so sometimes, you know, they don't always pick up after themselves. Um so sometimes we have to pick things up out of her way so that way she can get through there. Out the doors. She does have a wonderful wheelchair. Um there are some kids whose wheelchairs aren't so. I don't know, powerful. Um. But she does very well with hers. And then coming up, so where the road meets the gravel, it's not. I don't know, it's not, there's one spot where she can go over so that way her chair doesn't get caught because the other ones, the dip is just a little too steep. So sometimes her chair will get caught and then we'll have to physically push her. So um Stacy Sharette is the pair who's usually with her. Um and so she knows this one spot. You can see her be like, hey, this is your spot. Turn here, go down here. It does catch a little bit. Um there are times where if she goes too fast, you really have to be careful because if she goes fast, she could just flop right over. Um so and then through the gravels and then here in just a second, I'll turn. So all. Non-disabled students, typical peers, get a cut right through here to that gate and go to the greenhouse because of the way there's a step, so she can't, so she has to go all the way around the back, up the side, just to get inside the greenhouse where all of her peers are. And if um. If her wheelchair dies, there are chances that she may not get to go down there because the chair is so heavy, it's hard to get her back up the hill. And so um. Mom and dad replaced the battery. We have had issues, but um this year, the battery's been pretty good. So she's been able to go to the class. Uh but yeah, if the battery's dead, that chair is too heavy for one person to push on their own. They're almost there. Okay. Um when she's inside the greenhouse, so on the next slide. Um the this. The little lip to get out is um a little too steep. So somebody has to like push her up to get her out of the greenhouse. Um but this is just a picture of um where the. Those who can walk can step down, but those in a wheelchair have to go all the way around because that is not AD accessible. She cannot get her chair, for one, it's too narrow and for two, it's a step, so she can't get there. So she's having to go all the way around just to get into the greenhouse where the rest of her classmates are. Okay, this is where the little hump is, so they just have to lift her up because that lift is too thick for her chair to get up. So we have to lift her over the lift there. And then you don't have to play that clip, it's just another video of where, from where the bus lane is down there. How it's not smooth, so it's really difficult to get her chair up. You've got to be in just the right spot so that way she doesn't get stuck, so. And then, so what can we do? So this year we have a physical therapist here and so I've talked to her about this. I'm like, and we walked this path, I showed her exactly what we have to do. I said, it's taking her extra long to get to class because of, you know, the detour she has to take. And so we're like, how can we get her from the commons to the class? And there are wheelchair lifts. And I don't know if this is the right place for it, but I was just trying to brainstorm, what can we do to help her? And so like right outside the commons, there's that little strip there. If, you know, if we find a lift, so there's a, there's a hyperlink there and there are lifts that just go up and down. So if we were to put something in to get her, go out the commons, get on the lift, go down and into the class. It would save her from having to go all the way out to the parking lot and then turn and come back in. Going from the classroom to the greenhouse, I think is gonna be a little more difficult because there will have to be some paving just to make it accessible. So that way widening the gates, paving so that way it's good enough for her wheelchair to get down there safely, so. So that's what I have. I just know it takes her a long time and it's hard for her and I would like to. Get something that worked for her.
I, I had no idea that you, I, I wouldn't have imagined that a wheelchair could make it down that hill. So I did not know that. I thought you guys were ever in a band, so I mean that. I'm impressed with the wheelchair. That, yeah, I, like, as far as I'm concerned, like. The greenhouse is not accessible eighty. The, the temporary solution was to literally drive down there because it is that bad. The stadium project will. Will give access to that lower level. You're still gonna have to go out and around.
There are other areas throughout the high school that obviously might have issues too, or?
There are, yes, so, and, and not just.
Do we know how much? It would cost you.
I don't know at this time. Yeah, we need it, yeah.
We priced out like many certain projects, we're in capital product, capital project range. Or where that an athletic complex will forever be a barrier to resolve some of these issues, so we need to get that project done. That paperwork is still just sitting with the city. I mean, we've done all our paperwork with the city, so it's, it's in the city's hands. But we do know that as that project is moving along, it's time to start talking about. Parking lot of the high schools, two million dollars, parking lot of the middle schools, two million dollars, roof at the gym is about three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars, middle school gym, middle school gym is already leaking. If we don't resolve that, a two hundred thousand dollar bill will quickly become. A. And now, just to be clear, we have some of the highest salaries in the E S D, but we have the lowest draw. So we're eighty-eight percent of our district budget goes to salaries. There's not on up, there's nothing left over to turn around and put on the facilities. So. That's what we pay for and I think we make a good investment when we're investing in our people. But when we are in the bottom third of the E S D for what we draw in levy as far as rate, someone's taxable rate is in the bottom third. And then we also have, and we're also not very property rich, when you apply that low rate to a low property rate. I'll show you when I do my data dashboard, I'll show you kind of where we are in comparison to the rest of the state, what we get for, for student funding and instructional.
So looking at some of this, obviously some of this can be rolled into potentially a capital project of some sort. But we're still talking months from now to even go out to the kid. So the roof situation kind of looks like it's a little bit more dire. It does sound like we're gonna need to invest in here. Before we go off to summer. Kind of leaning towards.
I, I would like, if there's funding, I would love to re-roof the middle school gym. But that, and that being said, because there's so many roofs that are gonna be, need to be done, we need to start chipping away at them. So, and that one's like the one right now. Had expert come out and look at it, it's already had a re-roof over top. So you, the first layer, you can do another layer on top. After that, it's a tear up re-roof. We're at, that's what we're at.
It's pretty close to the new gym too, right? Where the leak is at in the middle.
Well, the, the, the new gym is actually. That roof is waiting, that, that sloped roof needs replaced. But then it rolls down onto the flat roof, which used to be like tar vapor with like sand on it, well now like all it just washed away, so.
I just bring, bring, you know, I, I know you know what's going on. It's just my worry is, is that we have that roof fail and then we're having. A wood floor replaced.
Oh, yes.
You know what I mean?
That could be, yeah, yeah. And yeah, actually the leak most likely is coming from that roof. It's just making its way to the other gym, so.
It's fortunate that that gym.
Yes, yes.
And then obviously some of these other projects, pretty major and I don't, we don't have any. Prices on what it would cost to do mediating compliance, obviously said.
Well, I mean, like, I mean, just the way the buildings are built, it's like, first of all, come up with a creative idea that actually would meet the need. And actually be effective and then get a price for that. That's, you know, we're talking, like, I'm trying to imagine where could you put an elevator, stuff like that. And that would be, some, I would probably bring somebody in, maybe that could advise us on that. I think that would be a first good step and then just like make a list of. You know, if, if we ever do any kind of. Like if we totally remodel the school, which I don't think is a bad idea, given that we're never gonna build probably a brand new one.
You're speaking of the high school.
Any, any of them, right? I think they all need it. When you do that, whenever you do that, you don't create an ADA compliance at that time, so. You know what I'm saying? So that, that would be the other option is like just to start like. We're gonna be like a big project, then that would all be kind of included with it.
Yeah, I really hate to do a big project and then turn around and remodel the school and have to do it all again to some extent.
I mean, the question goes, yes, how is the current accessibility legal? Well, the current accessibility is legal because of your grandfathered in, you're bound by the ADA requirements from when the building is built. So. That's what we're held to. If we change the building, we'll be bound by modern ADA compliance. This was an issue when I was doing a junior high program. We didn't have ADA accessibility on the gyms, the question for them on the stage. So the question was, could we do a building capital project levy? Well, we could, but it needs to include enough money for ADA accessibility to the stage. Because once you start engaging in that building, then you need to start having a plan to bring the whole building to ADA accessibility. So we do want to have a plan to do something with the high school. We have to make sure that that plan includes ADA accessibility early on within the priorities of that project.
Sounds like we did a lot of this stuff yesterday, so.
I, I appreciate, and I think getting someone that. I think we need some outside counsel to step in sooner than later to start getting, you know. We have lots of great intentions. I love that you searched and all those pieces, but. All important, we have a problem.
It's.
It's way bigger than any of us know how to fix in of ourselves, I think.
When a lot of these are documented, when we did our facility plan, the comprehensive ADA accessibility issues are documented throughout the facility project, plant project we did. And we had a plan included to remedy those as part of the bond project. It was part of what made the bond so expensive. And with bond failing, we weren't able to resolve those issues. So now, when we came back to the community, the community said, well, we've wanted to figure out this athletic facility to get it no longer being a source. So we have a plan for that, it's being donated, so no cost to the taxpayers. That project is now moving into the, not the final phases of construction, but the final phases of bureaucracy. And as that is moving through the final phases of bureaucracy, I think it's worthwhile saying, okay, if our community was honest about this, was our pinch point. Before we can move on to a necessity conversation. Now we're trying to gear up for, these are the bare bones, minimum necessity conversations. So the timing of this is intentional. I mean, we were hoping that we would have broke ground March first, but. Initially, another permit, another set of other words.
I will say, I'm not good enough, the buildings aren't built like battleships. I mean, they're not going anywhere. So if we do, if we invest in them, they will be, they sound like they're gonna crumble, you know what I'm saying? Throw roofs on, paint them, remodel the insights, get ADA, and we'll have, we'll have select schools. So, and then, you know, like a modernization would be ideal.
Yeah.
To just start picking at school. This is all, it's, we're gonna be helped from the taxpayer at the end of the day, so.
Capital projects are not funded, just to be clear. Levy is. It's your operations, it's your athletics. There is no capital funding within our traditional levy. State does not give us an allocation of capital levy. All of these things would need to come out of money coming in for materials and we're learning. So it'd have to come out of salaries. So if we do two hundred thousand dollars, it would have to come out of salaries. If we do two hundred thousand or instructional materials, I mean, I don't put a lot towards instructional materials, almost all of that was bought with Esser. So salaries. So it means we're gonna have to figure out what people, we need less of to pay for a new roof for the middle school gym. And that would be the decision of the board is, well, people, do we need less people for it to pay for more gym? Or more gym roofs, because a gym roof could, two hundred thousand dollars in a flooded gym now become a million dollars. And without any effort to say, hey, we'd like, might put a capital, then those are the decisions that will be fixed.
So moving forward on this. You guys are going to work towards. Where you have that capital or the. Yeah, the assessment basically, so you gotta work towards. Meeting some of their points of the assessment of where the school is at and then getting feedback from outside vendors to put together kind of what that total looks like.
No, we have a inflationary index to look at what the cost of inflation would be from when we got price quotes four years ago, what price quotes would be now. But I think if we really get away from that point in time, the inflationary price, the inflationary calculation. Is that being less and less useful?
Yeah, well, you, I mean, you can get budget numbers, like you can bring out like somebody that you would consider an expert, like a product guy that I know is like a legit roofing guy. And that's where I came up with the two hundred thousand. First he said a hundred fifty, oh, what about that down there? Just to be safe, two hundred, and now that's gonna have to go up to sealed bids, so that number's gonna be whatever it is. But that's kind of a budget number, right? And you don't wanna. I would say that's probably a safe number for that project. But each one of these, it's very easy, so. But yeah, you can definitely, they'll come out and give you kind of budget numbers without like charging you to do it. And then you can kind of gauge from there and then figure out what we want to go on to.
We can start shoring up. We have a lot of this information, we did the study, we have the prices. Now we just need to look at now seeing as what our community said in that meeting where. Very vigorous community members, I think the paper wrote an article on it, but they all agreed if we resolve this issue, they're willing to have further conversations about resolving issues for kids. So I think we take our community at their word. They said, if you resolve this issue, we'll have this conversation. I think it's time to get ready to have that conversation.
Okay, so this was last year when we had the naming facility. We had a committee to name the baseball fields out there. And the board chose legacy fields to, similar to a volunteer field of everybody that's helped or coached. Or contributing to that field in their, in their life would be recognized. I didn't go to that board meeting, but I heard two kind of distinct paths that we were thinking. And if I'm correct, one is to have a sign out there that recognizes those contributions. So here's an example, I've been working with a company that was out of Chehalis. That, this is an example, what it would be, that sign would be about, that should be a little higher when it's shown, but that's about eight feet in the air at the top. And it is an aluminum composite. And it's very durable and a sign is three millimeters thick. And the backdrop, the backboard is six millimeter. So this is a very sturdy sign out there. Okay, cost is about seventeen hundred. We can do the installing. Of that right there. So that's, that's one area, so we would recognize everybody. And it would just be a case of just researching and talking to the people who helped and all that kind of stuff. That's, that's the easy part. I've got a couple other bids too and it's all about similar, we'll come in, something that size will come in about fifteen hundred to two thousand. The other thing, if you wanted to hit that website. The other track that I heard talked about was somehow illustrating the history of the contributions. So I started searching and what I, one thing that I wanted to kind of explore. Is what some schools are doing now is they're having their entire history of their school. Not just sports, but the entire history of their school, academics, arts, CTE, the whole works on a touchscreen TV, which access to the public during events. So for example, I was just at districts in Centralia and they have a big touchscreen where you can go up there and, and hit a button. And you can see who their top ten is from nineteen eighty-five, or you could see what their current baseball team is, and that sort of thing. So I've been working with that company, we hit the website, is there a link to the website? So these screens are, touchscreens are very durable, you can bounce a basketball against them, I wouldn't recommend we do that. But would have access, now this would, you know, go, let's say, for example, it'd probably go somewhere in our commons. And it could be used by kids during the day, teachers. And during when we have events, the basketball games, when people are out getting their popcorn or something, they can, they can come in and look at it. But when you, if you went through this, there would also be a link for people to use at home. So they could read that touchscreen thing anytime they want. You don't have to sell this talk about. So if you want to flip it up where it says models and pricing, that's the one in Centralia right there now, and they moved it, looks like from last. Keep scrolling down there. So that, that's an example right there of the different types you could get. In the framed wall mount I was looking at and it would fit neatly in our little hallway that goes between that and the, the gym right there. Could just take out one of the. Little case. What's that? Trophy case, display case or whatever we got there. You also have that wall enclosure, which are pretty cool, but you gotta have a lot of area for that. I'm not sure we do. But that, that's kind of decisions I'd like to leave in the hands of kind of maybe a group of us or, or the board. Where we go. This is not cheap. What it is, it's about a. Anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand for the screen and the, and the frame. And it's a fifteen hundred dollars startup for their services and a thousand dollars a year after that. And they provide for the uploading and they also work with us in the design and creating. One of the things they do are their services to create a story. So when I saw that, I thought, okay, let's do the story of the Ventron fields. How did they start? Whatever pictures we can get from that, who's done it, who helped at this time, maybe we could build a timeline or something. They'll do that for us, that company.
Is this something you would have out of the fields?
No, this would be in the high school. I would suggest.
Be a little bit more money to make it weather safe.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the thought, if I remember correctly, was that anybody going out to the fields. Would be able to see the history out at the fields, I mean.
Yeah, then you're looking at a physical structure too, that would be comparable in price. And in my opinion, and this is your decision, not mine, I don't know how many people would see that, just at the baseball fields. Thought we'd get more bang for the buck to have a digital. Alternative where people could access it from their own home computer or phone.
Would you assume if we put a physical sign structure at the field, so if we looked at.
Would you assume if we put a physical sign structure at the field, so if we looked at a sign that listed out all the contributors, that's about 1,700. And a sign that was maybe more solid, was probably with a solid sheet of metal, not the pieces, probably closer, what's closer, 3,000? Or, we had two kiosks, one to list off the people who donated, one to list out that, kind of map out the history of the donations and the processes. And I guess, can you go back here, open up the aluminum sign?
Yeah, cuz that'd be a little bigger, right, to, to kind of give you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, 2,000 probably.
What I'm thinking is, is would, these signs aren't, the signs, the placards on this sign you have or not. Set up where it says donors, that's why I said best business, but I don't think that would be our plan. Our plan would be looking at all the people who individually contributed, so coached from this time or did from this.
No, that's just an example.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I think the example is, says best business, but what we'd be thinking is. On these placards, we'd be listing out the contributions and the time that the contribution happened. It wouldn't be for sponsors, and then the more detailed would be on the digital. Yes, that is kind of one of the questions, it's a group of different pieces. Is listing out the contributions, capturing what you were looking at throughout the field with the more detailed story on digital.
Cuz that's one thing that I was actually interested at, our softball, baseball fields. Having different people that made significant contributions to those particular fields. And it'd be nice to have a brief history. There at the field, so when people read the name, they actually know what that contribution was, that doesn't turn out, it's just a name. Name on the plaque, nobody really knows the history, just for me. The whole point of legacy fields, it is about the legacy that those individuals left behind. And therefore, people need to be able to see that more than just a name.
I think, I think it's Les Center. Their, their stadium there, when you walk up to their stadium, they've got something out front that explains history of how they are coming about building that stadium. It's not completed, but it, it gives you a brief story of how they've gotten to where they're currently at. I think that's kind of what we were thinking would go out, out to fields, something that somebody could walk up to and read.
Like a timeline or something that, you know, Elmo lost their baseball during these years and this individual, I'll bring it back. During these years, and then, then the fields were contributed during this time by.
The clearing of the fields, the logging of it all, I mean, I think that Jim has a pretty good. Recollection of how all that came about. I like this sign though too. Prominent families in the community that have contributed over the years, but I think are worthy of having their names on like this big sign also. We would, yeah, we would have names up through the years, yeah.
Do the story of the programs.
I'm wondering, I like no video. But I'm also trying to capture a, a story that will continue to evolve. So in five years from now, we can have this other really awesome thing that we also would want to add to the story, but now we have signs. And I'm trying to think through in a positive way, we're not the best about keeping things updated in general. And so I may be wondering. Even like QR code, something that would be more. Changeable, something that, I mean, I'm not the generation of QR codes, but who's coming is the generation of QR. I don't know, I'm a little bit hesitant to spin. Unless it's gonna be like, these are, these are the legacy founding fathers, and we're just gonna feature that story, and that's okay. But I think we wanna think about, and then what, and if there's gonna be, and then, I don't know if it makes sense, would we just keep on putting more kiosk, you know, and how do we kind of stay current?
You could do that with that sign, you could have, you know, prominent names on that sign.
Yeah.
But for the history, click on the QR code, for example, and now that could tie into. I, I like the, the gym commons, you know, idea, and somehow we can link the QR code.
Oh, that's easy, that's what they do.
To, to that system, and then.
Here's what got me there, you know the banners I worked on in the school?
Yeah.
It was frustrating to get the history, because its history is lost. We will never know the history of how many, like our track program and some of the other stuff. To begin to, it's in a spot that we have for the rest of time, in the same spot, not physical but digital. I think we should really think about that. And not just sports, this is for everything. The buttons at the bottom of us, Centralia, CTE, arts, academics, sports, and something else. And one more thing about that digital one too, they have a, there's a company in New York that will scan and download all your yearbooks, which will be of great interest to everybody too. That's one of the things they feature. But we, I mean, I think you're right, Chris, probably 2,000 more for a story of history, we're assigned, if you wanna go with that.
So is this?
You know, depending on the fund. You know, I see those sports timelines where they actually have a timeline from the beginning, right? Each year it kind of pops out a person, which would be really cool, but I don't know where to put that, I don't know how it costs. But I mean, those are semantics, I think you have some great ideas, do you have any idea on funding or?
There's two groups that are very interested, but I don't wanna speak for them. We just have to get to go ahead, probably you guys, whenever that is too.
Yeah, the sign they like, you see with the center.
The only hesitation about the field is it's exposed, and it's not.
Other thing you gotta remember about that field, sorry, but it's very isolated, nobody lives around it. And graffiti and vandalism is a thing out there, so that's. It's, it's not the best place to put anything of high value, that's what I would have to say about that.
The vinyl, those vinyls would go for about 300 dollars probably. Which is a lot cheaper. No, I can figure out that sign, like, but no script, time of cost and all that kind of stuff.
Thanks for your help.
You bet.
Yeah, appreciate it. All right. Mark, I think you're a good presentation of instructional materials.
All right. So as you remember, as you recall, last spring, we did three major instructional materials adoptions in the district. One was for math, and these instructional materials adoptions were a long time, let's put it that way, a long time since we had done the adoptions in the area. So we did an adoption in Sabas for 612. In our secondary schools. So what I put in your, what I sent to you for your board packet was some bullets. I, I couldn't see bringing a ton of people here, what I tried to do is bring one person to present to you just their own perspective. On what they're seeing with the liking about the new materials, base and things that they felt were not so good about the new materials. And then I did interview several other teachers and did some bullet points, and that's what you got in your packet. I can go through those bullet points as well, I know this is a long game, just kind of lie on. Presentations from the folks that are here, just, just keep in mind that as they talk, it's just their perspective. You should probably first, a lot of them are the same. I want you also to keep in mind that this, we're just one semester in. So they've only been using these materials for one semester. And, you know, one of the things we found out for sure is that instructional materials adoptions are different than they used to be in the past. In the past, well, you guys remember school, you, you go through your instructional materials or your curriculum. And it would be like chapter one through chapter 10, an hour long, the hour long it took the teacher to get there, that's how long it was. We, our philosophy now and what it really is set up for, because of the online resources and the hard copy resources, the amount to share, amount of information. Is it, it's simply, it's a resource for teachers. They teach you the standards, find the resource, pick the resource that works best for them, in some cases it could be new material, some cases it could be old material, it could be supplemental material, but just remember this is a resource. We're also working on the professional development, is a big part of this package in here, and so we're working on the mid-year professional developments for each of them as well. Okay, so I wanna thank the board again for supporting this move, it was a big investment. But I think we're seeing some great things out of it, teachers feel like they have a lot more tools in there. With that, I'm gonna start with Jenny.
I have, I think, five slides, maybe four slides, so Sabas at the middle school, I tried to make it as short and sweet as possible. So I tried to keep it three bullet points, focus on the standards, higher level questioning with real world examples, and then actually individualizing learning. With grade level and prerequisite standard of mastery, and I have an example of that too, so. And so focusing on the standards itself, and I'm gonna walk over it just cuz I feel more comfortable. But teachers and students discuss standards outstanding, so I'm not just telling you, Ken, hey, you have an A right now, or, oh, Monroe, can I get my grade up? We're actually talking about, hey, I didn't understand how to graph, I didn't understand what the Y intercept was, I didn't understand this part of the standard. Students can identify what part of the standard they do not understand. And so if you're actually having a conversation with students, they don't just say, hey, I got a F on test 3.5, they'll just say, well, I can't graph. I can't take this graph and put it to an equation, or I can't change my equation and match it to a word. Teachers can work with students in small groups to help understanding of students, standards not mastered yet. Now, not that all of you get to work in the wonderful environment that we get to work in every day. But our classrooms are not always the easiest rooms to work at, right? Our, our clientele, our colleagues in the room aren't always excited. And so again, we can actually work in small groups, like I can turn away from another student and learning still happen. That's crazy talk in the eighth grade classroom, so really exciting for me. And students are able to actually show their understanding of a standard on an individualized platform. So they don't just have to say, oh, Monroe gave me a test on this. No, okay, well, if you can't do it on this test, do it somewhere else, and that's one of my aha moments. I'm teaching math, and there are a few students that just will not take quizzes. They're accidentally sick every time we have a quiz, they have to stay home that weekend. They start the quiz, but they never finish the quiz. And so what this also does, I have a student right now, and I'm gonna share, I know everything, and it's actually on the next slide. Oh, it's on the third slide, sorry, this is on the third slide, and this, can you go back one, sorry? I wanna show my pictures here. But this shows actual data, I blocked out the names after I copied it, I blocked it out before I copied it, it didn't work, I blocked it out after I copied it, I think it's worked. And so I don't, this is three different students, I do have a couple more copies if needed. But this actually shows, each of the standard students have been working on individually. Now, these are, the groups that I have are three different levels of students, but again, we have different students in here. I had a student that was in one of my algebra classes, which is a high school level class. And that student is on this, the very top of this. You'll notice that he's assigned an eighth grade level, and he's already gone more than a quarter through his year. But the bigger thing is down here. Before, when I was working with our curriculum or instructional material, I would have to almost connect our standards with that instructional material. This shows me right here, how many times the kids got a question on the actual standard I'm asking. So I don't have to go back through and say, oh, this kid's asked it this many times. So the standard I was testing on was on a statistics, right? Well, this kid actually in his individualized program, if I looked on here, he's already been answered, answered a question on statistics four times, and he got it four times right. That's mastered, right? And so I could actually take his score from here and put it in the floor, and so then now, he doesn't have to play that game, oh, I took the quiz, Monroe, guess what, you got a grade for it. You showed me it, maybe you didn't show me the way you thought you were gonna show me. And then the second page of this is a student that has a really low attendance rate. And it's sometimes on behavior, sometimes different things, but you can see they have worked over 15 hours. Inside and outside of school, but they have mastered quite a few standards. It both in are the level that we're at and the level before. And so to me, I'm talking to you right now of what my students understand, what they don't understand, I know the levels they're in, there's no way I knew that last year. I, my neck is, and I could say, oh, about this area, right? But I can tell you exactly what they don't understand, how many times I've assessed them. So next one, sorry, I'm trying to do five minutes, but those of you who know me, I don't speak fast. Another one, this is a, I showed this picture because right now we're in middle school volleyball, right? Middle school volleyball, and I know, volleyball picture, sorry, it would be better if it was a soccer one. But up here, it's showing real world investigation, we're graphing what a volleyball does during a game. So we're talking about motion, we're talking about kids, what they're doing right now, it's students that look like them, right? There's not just students that are, that look like me, it's students that look like all of our different students that we have. And they're asking higher level questioning, it's not questions that are like, oh, can you remember this information, it's actually higher level. And so, and questions are both online and person, I had a student the other day go, you know, I don't really wanna read this right now. I go, great, I have headphones, and that little play button means it'll read it to you. And so just amazing things like that. And then the last one, again, is just the data we're getting. It's just, it's insane. Oh, excuse me, this is from, sorry, a quote, and again, our, our eighth graders and their bros and things like that, right? But this student is one that I feel like I've had a hard time to connect with, and I said, well, what do you think? And she goes, even if I am not in class, I still feel like I know what is going on and I can work on my learning no matter where I am, and understand that that's not at her house, that is a lot of different places. And so to me, this is just huge. Also, she is right now passing with a 92.25 in the understanding of current eighth grade standards. And she has grown almost 70% in her sixth grade standard, understanding. And so again, I am helping her a little bit, but she's also helping herself. She's, it's getting to that on learning, and so sorry, the last one. So this is actually, if you see this on my computer, it's color. And so yes, right now it looks, it is what it is. But again, I can actually go in, see where they're at, see mastered or not mastered. And this year, we have implemented coaches, and so I have a math coach that also helps me with that. But this curriculum is something that, or instructional material is something that I could not have ever even tried to imagine of last year. And so that was, in math, we're seeing great results so far.
You'll see in the bullet points that I gave you, some geometry teacher that I. Keep in mind that calculus wasn't Sabas, Sabas didn't have a calculus brand, so we had to go with Wiley on that. And part of our difficulty with that was, it wasn't the hardback copy that they got, it was more of a notebook. Three ring binder type thing, and so that was, that's been her biggest struggle there. And I also interviewed a special ed teacher, this is a whole piece of that. Things that she's liked and things that have been difficult for her, but she's using the success maker, which is another piece to the Sabas.
How do you think, I mean, we generally expect a slide, adoption here, assessment slide, that's what you expect.
Well, that's what we've, we've been really talking as a group, we've tried to focus on math, like having meetings once a week. I have been really trying to. I have been really trying to refocus us on, okay, what are our priority standards? Because we are learning a little bit, we are learning things, we are a little bit behind. We're talking about, hey, guys, geometry, you know, we gotta fit those. But we all know what our priority standards are. And if you would have asked us three or four years ago, hey, are you guys good on your priority standards? We would have said, well, we're through chapter three.
Our teachers are aware, I mean, how we're not feeling, unlike, like, we expect as a district.
Yeah, no, I, I feel like where I, I have made gains, it should even me out. It's, I've made so many gains with different things, I feel like it, the goods are the bads.
I appreciate that. One of my peers is, is like, hey, we've got this new material, so we should be hitting it out of the park. But all research would say that would never happen, because in an adoption cycle, you're finding your rhythm. So like, our expectation isn't that we have it hit it out of the park, our adoption cycles that you're finding your rhythm.
We're finding our rhythm, but we're also, I think, what kids are finding rhythm. I ask them, hey, what right now hands down, I ready, success maker, by Mage Do One, success maker. Hands down, all of them. And to me, that's huge, because that's our individualized program, and that's what we want them to do. And that's the thing is that the kids, I'm not telling what they have to do. They're also like, they're excited, and they're like, oh, I'm already seven, seven, I'm seven, you know, seven, tens of my way through my school year. And I even had, I had six kids stay bump up, a grade bump. And they're like, the questions are too easy. I don't think I would have ever had a student last year that told me that their questions are too easy. The other thing is, we've had a lot of conversations of understanding math. Kids are doing math, I'm not teaching, but like, they're teaching themselves and, and learning. It's not just me showing them examples, old school math. It's them actually learning to hopefully understand how to do algebra, geometry, statistics, things later on, because it doesn't just stop, it doesn't just, everything builds on itself. So I feel like it's giving us the better.
How's your stress on this? It's a different way of doing things. I mean, how is your stress been on this? Is it okay? I mean, it's a different way of thinking, sometimes you gotta navigate.
Well, again, I work at the middle school, so on the stress levels and things that, instructional materials is on the smaller end of my stress levels.
Appreciate that. Like I said, I, I think it's different, but I do think you did a good job getting on the point that if you understand where your students are at, teaching would be easier. It's a lot of times when you're going through your script, you're teaching things the students maybe already know, and then they get disengaged because I already know this, and now you start having behavior problems. Or the opposite, you're teaching things beyond where they're at, and then students get disengaged, and then you start having behavior problems. So by being able to ensure your students know where they're at, it should, it's different, but it should be easier.
Some of our highest gainers are our players that we have to try to keep, but they're like, oh, no, I'm doing that.
Appreciate that.
Of course, it's.
Thank you.
Really, thank you.
It was structural materials, we appreciate it.
I think it's great that they're actually trying to teach themselves to, kind of Holly Wirthy saying while back, that what, what were you guys talking about, the lack of kids going to college and stuff, just don't know how to learn or teach themselves, right? So, yeah.
When we go back to algebra, we were in hybrid, Holly had me for hybrid. And I was, I was, I was pulling them through algebra and hybrid. And, and I really am saying pulling, because I feel like right now, I'm holding on the coattails, and I'm kind of excited about it. Not that I don't love the hybrid.
Okay. We have Josh Burnett here, who's been a third grade teacher during the pilot. Actually did a split class a year before third, fourth grade, so he's used CKLA with third, fourths, and now he's a fourth grade teacher, so he's gonna share a little perspective. CKLA is.
Yeah, I'm gonna go over here too, I like Jenny's idea. So a couple of things that we've noticed are going really well with CKLA is student engagement is through the charts. They love the stories, they love the content that it provides. And I put an example down here, and it highlights some of the vocabulary that it's going through. And my favorite part about this part right here, that they're going through Peg Herrett's polio story. And I had kids talking about polio nonstop for about a month straight. And they also just lived through a pandemic too, and so we got to relate pandemic living through this. And so it was super relevant to these kids. And it left them on this amazing cliffhanger right there. It says, when I woke up, I was paralyzed, and that's when we stopped for the day for the reading. And when you have a room of 24, nine, 10-year-olds about writing because you stopped their ELA, I think it's doing a pretty, pretty good job there. Our I-ready data is pretty good and pretty high. This is my second year using it. And at this point in the fourth grade, I had done about the same. I'm just now getting into some of the stuff that would be more my piloting year. And I started the year with a pretty good amount of reds in my ELA, a good chunk of yellows, and only a couple of kids starting in green, which is to be expected. Starting the fourth grade, you shouldn't be at fourth grade level yet. And the thing that I wanted to show right here was, my class average is already at a typical year scrap halfway through the year. And I think that speaks a lot to the quality of instructional material that CKLA is. We're seeing fantastic growth to where like, my green bar is now a third of my class at that point in the I-ready cycle, with a lot of kids getting really close. And my reds are starting to shorten up, and they become more yellows, which I'm really, really happy about personally. And informational for anyone who has ever taught ELA is about the most boring thing you can do as an ELA teacher. The kids do not like nonfiction. And, or you either have that kid who really, really likes nonfiction. And for the most part, all of my kids are super engaged with a lot of the nonfiction content. So we're, we're seeing a lot of good things with that. And on the next slide, I have a couple of things that we're, we're starting to notice and having a little bit of a hiccup with. And some of that is pacing. Pacing was one of the things that when I talked to my fellow fourth grade teachers, and when I talked to some of the third grade teachers and the fifth grade, a lesson is supposed to be a one-dayer. And you're supposed to be able to move on and go to the next thing the very next day. And we're noticing that a lesson will take two to three days in order to get through. And when that lesson takes two to three days, that pushes some other things further on out. We have 10 pages of reading a day in fourth grade that we do, and we're talking very, very dense vocabulary, high count of multi-syllabic words, and a lot of things that are difficult for our lower-end readers. And so we have to end up picking and choosing what we do, or split it over multiple days. And that's going to end up leading to a very large amount of surplus materials. They, they, books send us some stuff, and right now, we're sitting at 185 copies of unit seven's workbook in the fourth grade. And if we don't get to that unit again next year, we'll be sitting on 285 copies of that same workbook, and it will just continue to get grow and grow and grow, unless we can work that out with CKLA themselves. I had a couple of other things I was going to touch on that same thing real quick. With that, having to push some stuff out over a course of days, we've noticed like, they usually only have one big unit quiz at the end. Progress checks are a little hard to come by in CKLA, so when the unit quiz is after, say, lesson 15, that's only two weeks. But if you're doing two to three days per lesson, you're looking at one quiz every 30 to 45 days. And that's really, really hard for us to assess student learning on that. So we either need to figure out how to pick up the pace, or what we can cut and condense in order to kind of get more frequent assessment in there. And the content is usually geared towards high benchmark. I already referenced that we have 10 pages of high-level reading per day, and it's, it's geared towards your benchmark reader. So those kids who are strategic or intensive, if I'm having them just read the content, it's a lot more difficult for them versus if I just have them listen to it. But then it's kind of harder, because then they're not actually practicing the reading, it's just more of the comprehension. So it's kind of a difficult thing there.
And one of the things you do to compensate for that is more, more choral reading?
I do choral reading in my classroom exclusively. Some of my higher readers get really annoyed at me, but my lower readers psych me. And so I have to pick and choose my battle on that. And so the battle that I picked is either I read to them, we read together, or occasionally I'll let them listen to it, and we kind of rotate through that kind of a model.
So. When I talked to fifth grade, they had the same kind of a concern, the rigor and the reading level was a little higher than, than what our typical student would have with much richer vocabulary. We know that lower socioeconomic readers have lower vocabularies. And so what we, what they found in fifth grade was, they're able to put together a lot of vocabulary, but the students are so engaged in the content that it's easier to put that vocabulary into context for them, because they're interested in it. They're learning much more.
May I ask Josh a question on that then? I mean, my understanding is we adopted CKLA under the premise of Mark's job, which is King's point. Which King's point being that we are about 78% pre-graduates lunch, 78% pre-graduates lunch, paying less summer vacation, spring break travel, you know, going to museums, which in CKLA, which is where you get that background knowledge. And the benefit of CKLA is the priority on that background knowledge. Now, I think my question is, is, so we're going through it, we're getting that background knowledge vocabulary. Do you see this as an ongoing problem? Or do you see as students experience CKLA more often, and they work through the systems? Like, I almost feel like as, as hearing it, it does sound like it could also just be part of that new material slide. This is the first time students are getting presented with so much background knowledge. But as we start getting used to the background knowledge, what do you, is your, I mean, I have an assumption, what is your forecast on?
So I think that the students will start to get used to it a lot more. Another kind of catching point too, is it's designed as a K5 curriculum. It's designed that in the third grade, there, it's an animal unit, and this little guy named Rattenborough pops in, he's like, hey, guys, you remember me? And my kids are like, no, we don't, because we have never heard about you before. And so the curriculum makes an assumption that you have adopted it district-wide. And so when you're jumping in at third grade, and third grade really hits the brunt of it, because so far in my experiences in fourth grade, it has not hit back as often. But in third grade, it self-references its material all the time, those first couple of units, and the kids are pretty lost, until finally you get into some of the newer stuff where it's less self-referencing. So I think that our third graders are going to continue to have a little bit more difficulty at the time, whereas our fourth and our fifth graders will start to get used to it more and more, considering that's what we're going to be.
That's a no work detail, I appreciate that.
Is there a plan ever to see what adopted K2, so that goes?
We prioritize super kids, which is reading out of science or reading priority, which kind of goes back to what a lot of community awareness. Kind of be wanted to get to that K1 to immediate awareness foundational background. So they will support kids adoption earlier. Could always be up for future conversation, I don't know. CKLA's priority was background knowledge in lesson.
Josh, you want my interview? Oh, correct.
Correct.
Books and so having a wide selection is very helpful because you can focus on those stories are actually they're going to enjoy. Um, let's see here. The online platform. We have had mixed reviews on it. It will track the student's data. However, it's not all secure. And we're working with the company actually back and forth talking about this. Because if I assign a test, like a unit test, I can't lock that test and it's online. And so I have to get a paper copy of it, which doesn't record the data or if I put it online, I don't really. That data, I'm not really going to use it if my kids can just go home and work on the test when they're outside of the classroom. I just don't necessarily feel, and same thing with a lot of the online stuff, we're using it more for several things in class activities. Like I'll throw the graphic organizer of the online version up on the board on a screen. And they'll open their computers and we'll walk through it together so that we're all kind of on the same page and there's no reason for any of it. Um, yeah, we have another online curriculum that we use that has assessments, has a pre, mid, and post year assessment. And um it it tracks all of our standards and it also kind of like what Jenny was saying with math. We can pull up each student, we can see how many times it asked answered questions on each standard. We can look at it as a class, we're gonna see the growth chart, we can do all of that there. And so not having access to that in this curriculum isn't really a big deal because they thankfully, one of the reasons we chose it. Was it has enough of enough pieces that we have a really good crossover. If the stories in the textbook, it's probably also in the other curriculum. So if I want to grab the online data for that story. I can have the kids go into there and take the assessment on it there. And so it's been, it's actually pretty seamless for us. It it almost doesn't feel like we're using a new curriculum, it's just more a matter of like wrapping your head around the way that it's meant to be used. Which for me, I know in my classroom, this curriculum is set up on a note taking basis, which I've never done that before. I I have a philosophy with my students and note taking, I don't ever ask them to take notes, they're not going to have to use for something because otherwise what's the point? I don't grade their notes, it should be for them to take. And I I've always done practice with note taking, but always tied it to a quiz. And the way that the high school curriculum is set up. It's set up so that as you move through your discussions, videos you're watching, you know, video PowerPoint you're going through, the um. Any background context information, the kids are meant to take notes and they're meant to keep their notes um as a like a journal. And then they use those notes to complete the assignments. And it really has put a lot of, a lot more onus on the kids to be responsible for that. You know, it's really great when. You're like, okay, guys, you know, we're gonna, this works, the note taking day, we're gonna take notes on whatever plot or. And you actually see everybody get out their notes and they're busy and they're engaged because they know they're gonna use them and they know they're gonna be helpful. And they know that whatever the next activity is, they're gonna rely on those. And and like, we just did an activity with my software the other day where they had to pull out notes from a couple of weeks ago. Because we were pulling ideas together, we were going back and kind of putting everything together. And everybody pulled it out, they had them and they're like, oh yeah, I've got those definitions and. It revelled to analyze what we're analyzing and, you know, type it all the stuff. And it was really, it was just really great to see because I think that um. I did it because the curriculum told me that I, that's how it was meant to be used. And it did not offer me. Um, a a crutch to not use it. And so I just had to just decide, just jump in to do it, what, try it out. And I'm so glad I did because honestly, it's changed my teaching and it's changed kind of the rhythm of my classroom, the way that I feel is really positive for me and the kids. Because also going back to what Holly was saying, um, I do feel like it's something that is gonna help them in future. And I tell them, it doesn't matter where you are. My first waitressing job, I had to learn a thirty six page menu. And I had to sit in these, you know, things where they're teaching us all about how to expedite dishes and blah blah whatever, when to take a big test. I I didn't know how to take notes. I knew how to like get navigate that and walk away from those instructional pieces with what I needed. And so I just tell the kids, this is a life skill, learning to assimilate information and sort through what you need to put down and what you don't need to put down. It's something that you will use for the rest of your life in whatever learning place you ever find yourself in. So that's been really good. Um, we do wish that we would have realized that the longer novels and things like plays Shakespeare, et cetera. With all the other curriculums I looked at, they were included. You didn't have to order them separately. And so we just assumed they were on the list. And so like, oh, there's, you know, Romeo and Juliet. And then when we when actually got it, we realized, oh, you have to elect those and we didn't. But that's okay, because we we have our ways that we can do it and it's fine. But it would be nice if we would have known and we could have grabbed a couple of our core bigger texts that we use. Um. Like I said, they they don't currently offer a pre, mid, and post assessment. But we have one that we use and so it's fine for us right now, but we are working with them. And we are asking for that, just like we're asking for them to find a way to lock the assessments and make them secure so that we can use their data. I'd really be interested in using their data and the other data and comparing them and see how they measure kids, it likes for them to measure kids because. What they could do with one story of this, they'll be able to do it with an article or another story or poem. And so they just need a lot of exposure and so it's kind of that. But basically, um, overall, we're pleased. It's meeting our needs well. We don't need a lot of bells and whistles. It has everything that we need. It's given us some great ideas and um. Yeah, I'm I'm happy with it, especially compared to the things, other things we're looking at. So. Thank you.
Hey, and then you also seen your board packet, there were some bullet points there. See what she felt like from an eighth grade perspective. Were there any questions for? Any of the materials or? Again, I wanna, first of all, I want to thank our presenters, but also the folks that I spent some time with interviewing and get some bullet points. I want to thank you again for your support. This is really what's really needed. Thanks to my presenters.
Data update, Chris.
All right. So this is our new EFRS dashboard. Eric gave a presentation on this in December. One of the things to note about this dashboard is this is based off of our state percentile. So when you see regular attendance sixtyth, it does not mean sixty percent of our students come to class every day. Means our daily attendance outperforms sixty percent of all schools in the state. So um, and this is one of the ones that we're working to go public. So you'll see CTE tech rep forty fourth percentile. So that means our students earn college credits in their CTE courses more than eighty four percent of all other schools in the state. Sometimes there's an example where we'd like to be lower than that, that percentile average. Um. Good example down here, students not enrolled in post secondary education eighty sixth second percentile. That means. We um only outperforming the opposite eighty eight percent, no eighteen percent of schools in the state. So we would like to be, so maybe just make a point to make sure that you're reading these details because it is based upon, it takes that score. And then the it factors out where we sit within that percentile. So this is public facing now, this is, do we have this one on our website yet? We're waiting for round of data. This is an active link. I don't think we've shared it with on our website as we're kind of shoring it up. Um, you can kind of see like students meeting our ELA sixty fourth percentile, students meeting math standard, we're in the fifty second percentile. Whenever I talk about our priorities as a district, you'll also notice class size, when you hear about our class size, forty second percentile. So that means our class sizes are smaller than fifty eight percent of all schools in the rest of the state. So we do a pretty good job running smaller class sizes. Our teacher experience sixty seven percentile for our teacher experience, so it means we have a more experienced staff. Fifty six percentile for how many teachers go at advanced level degrees. So it does give us a chance to look at where. Are um where we sit, we'll notice in our kind of preparation, we sit in the ninety seventh percentile in the state graduation rate. We graduate more kids at Alma High School in our district. I mean, there's only three percent of the schools in the entire state of Washington graduated at a higher percentage rate than we do. So we have one of the highest percentile graduation rates. Whenever I talk about a lot of our priorities, things are the areas like our low, our low rated performance. We're in the fifteenth percentile for where our students go to go into four year university. And we're in the eighty second percentile for students going, not going to any form of post secondary. So I would say like if you reverse that eighteenth percentile students, so having a really, really high, again, three percent away from the top. Schools in the state graduation rate, yet we outperform eighteen percent. Or we're moving on and pursuing a post secondary education. And that's really why we've made that a priority. And I actually do have some positive news to share from that when I started continuing to go through this data. So. We've made it a priority and I just wanted to really reiterate. When we're setting our priorities, we set our priorities off of these kind of big glaring like, hey, this is a data indicator that we really feel strongly. We need to make an impact on. I talked fiscally, there's one area that we do sit in the lowest. And that's regular instruction expenditures per year and total expenditures per pupil. That's because this is what we get, almost everything we get in. Eighteenth percentile for total expenditures per pupil. Eighth percentile, regular instruction. Fiftieth percentile, this means for the money we get, and I talked about what we're getting in levy, what we get for the state. We are eighth percentile for what we're getting fifteenth, eighteenth percentile. So ninety two percent of all schools in the state are receiving more levy funding than we receive. So whenever we're going to our community, we're talking about ADA accessibility, we're talking about what our students get, we're talking about roofs. I have conversations saying, can we get paras in the hallway? Well, no. Because we're in the eighteenth percentile, ninety two percent of schools are getting more money per student than we get. So there is no money for it because we're only out, we're only out from eighteen percent of the schools in the rest of the state. For what we're getting as far as funding things and having programs, ninety two by eight, sorry. Eighty two percent of all schools in the state have better funding for pupil funding that we are getting. But when we put that money, I want to go back, notice how it says fiftieth percentile for instructional, where the money goes for instruction. Is when you're being outperformed by eighty two percent of all schools. And yet we have a class size that outperforms only forty two percent. It means that our priority has been to protect the classroom. So again, we don't have extras, we don't have areas walking the halls to provide support for discipline areas. Because we also don't have class sizes, like my wife's over at Miller, they have class sizes of thirty seven to forty. They also don't, we also don't have class sizes to thirty seven to forty. So we made the priority of instead of having class sizes of thirty seven to forty, to have somebody walk, having somebody walk the halls, we prioritize smaller classes. So this is how we set our priorities, this is how it plays out, this is how it can be seen. Because I think a conversation comes up all the time, how do you manage this, or how do you manage that, your staff for it? This kind of shows you how we're spending our money, what we're getting, when I say we don't really have the funding for it. Or how we're setting our priorities or why we want to prioritize kind of this post secondary plan. Any kind of questions on this uh kind of public facing? I think one of the big concerns is understanding how we set it up, where it looks at our percentile. Compared to the rest of the state and why we set our priorities. Yeah, when we are in the, your observation, Paul, we normally can't take questions from the outside of the board. But when we're in the eighteenth percentile for instructional funding. And we are outperforming the state average, that's an incredible return on investment. And I think it's because we have prioritized smaller class sizes, we have prioritized making sure that we have teachers, we have prioritized the classroom environment. But again, questions come up on how we can reallocate that money, like we have a concern on this, we have a concern on that, all of those things are money. Our priority has always been having the best environment we can possibly invest in. I thought it'd be great to see that on how we compare to the rest of the state. One of the things that popped up was our. Uh, students taking a college in the high school class fortieth percentile. Uh, I don't normally like to name teachers publicly in meetings because I think sometimes it could, you know, not always, but this is a really positive one, so I'm going to. Jamie Joe Hiles launched a financial algebra finance one seventy four, it's a five credit quantitative math class for universities, so we take quantitative math class. Um, if you're not in a math required major, so we have students taking financial algebra as a graduation requirement. Jamie Joe moved it over to finance one seventy four and she just added thirteen new seniors completing a financial, uh, finance one seventy four. Five credit college level math class. It's just our first year, we think that we are confident that we can totally expand beyond that number. But thirteen, we graduate about a hundred and ten, so let's say thirteen students. Um, I haven't taken college math in a long time, but we'll say it's eleven to twelve percent. That is an immediate eleven to twelve percent increase of students now having college math done. Would not need math in college, but have that completed, or generally students that are in a financial algebra class, we're using that as a graduation pathway. Have now eliminated a college math as a barrier for completing our post secondary education. Without that, looking at these high school outcomes, again, this was a big area for us. Eighty second percentile for not enrolled, fifteen percentile for me, those were like glaring things that we wanted to prioritize, especially when you're in the ninety seventh percentile. I said it once, I'll say it again, grab rate and fifteenth, that low for post secondary going rate, it was a big deal for us to make that a priority. And I reiterated it because it sounds negative. I want to look at, this data just got updated last week. And for our four year university going rate for the class of two thousand twenty three, so this was our second year of our work was twenty two percent. I told Eric, I said, and then go back to twenty twenty, it was eight percent, fourteen percent, sixteen percent, twenty two percent, that was a six percent increase. In twenty eighteen, it was at nineteen percent. And looking for another year, nineteen nineteen nineteen, twenty percent in twenty thirteen. Thirteen percent. So in twenty thirteen, we're at twenty percent. So Michael, I know you graduated what, oh, two? So in oh two, you might argue that numbers were really high in the late nineties, did really well too. But going back to two thousand and five, when the data was tracked in a post COVID, so if you read the paper, it says, post secondary going rates are an all time low. Students are not going, student transition is not going. In the class of two thousand twenty three, in our second year of making this work a priority. I get it, we were only outperformed by two percent from the class of twenty thirteen, we had the highest university going rate since this data has been being tracked, just our second year of our work. So I do feel confident that we've made this work a priority and we're seeing an impact on our students. Our lowest post secondary going rate is fifty three percent, the last time was fifty three, lower than fifty three percent was in twenty fourteen at thirty nine percent. So we're also seeing a dramatic impact when nobody else is seeing this type of transition on that move. And to the number one things that drive post secondary going rates, number one, students need to know why they want to pursue some form of education beyond high school. Number two is our students academically prepared, and this is in rank order. So by adding our college in the high school classes, trying to ensure everybody's to, all the students have a ELA or a math credit, no longer as an obstacle. Those are the two greatest barriers for completing a post secondary education is college English and college math. Eliminating those two barriers and ensuring that students have a pathway in mind, um, if we can eliminate those two issues, I feel confident that we're gonna. So I did kind of point out like, hey, these are low areas for our priority at work. I also wanted to backfill that on, we are also having some of the best numbers that we have. This as far as prioritizing this work. So we're moving, I feel like we're moving in the, in. Moving the areas that the board has decided are our priorities, we are making it. Questions on that? Yeah, and I told Eric, I said, I'm gonna celebrate over two percent, but I think it's still worthwhile. Sure, we're only up from twenty two to twenty, but. It's twenty years of data and I'll take it. Um, when we look at our I ready data, our teachers do an incredible job. Our teachers do a very, very incredible job. And when you want to look around, one of the things that impacts education, I think what happens is is we own issues like year to year. And I don't think we look at education holistically. Um, and and that's really what we need to look at. This is really a big point of our master based learning work. If you look at um, Boland's work or. On the instructional core, they'd say there's three things that drive student learning. Number one is a teacher who's teaching, a teacher who understands the content, which they're teaching at, teacher. Number two is content, but the third thing, and I think we generally forget it, is the student. Because if you're delivering ninth grade material to a student who has an eighth, seventh grade reading level, you could have materials at content level. You could have a teacher teaching at content level, but you have a student who doesn't understand that conversation. I always use an example, my wife was a paramedic forever. When she got around medical professionals, they would use all the Greek and Latin roots. I would have no idea what was going on. In that conversation, because I'm not a medical professional, I have a bachelor's degree in IT and computers. If we have students at a seventh grade reading level or a sixth grade reading level, we're delivering materials at a level that's beyond them. You start seeing students being lost, you have students, you have two parts of that instructional core. But you have students not knowing what's going on in those academic conversations around that. That's where I say our teachers are really doing an incredible job, because when you look at our I ready data. Really what you see is, you see on average about a ten percent loss every year. It's a ninety percent success rate. The ninety six percent success rate is an incredible success rate. But at the end of say kindergarten, you have a ninety percent success rate, that means ninety percent of your kindergarteners were, you know, to standard, ten percent were not. Now, when you go to first grade, if you have a ninety percent success rate. That's nine of the ninety now are being moved over to join that test, you have nineteen percent not as standard. Because that original percent not as standard, not really, if you're not getting content where you're at, you're getting further behind. And what it looks like is by the time you start hitting middle school, you start seeing bigger numbers, you start seeing like thirty five percent not standard or forty percent not to standard. And it feels like, oh my goodness, I have forty percent of my kids not to standard. But really what we have going on is. You're adding in a very, very small percentage over multiple years. This is why we really made our priority one year's growth in one year's time, and you can see this in the I ready data. And that's how we've traditionally protected it. Kind of questions on that theory? So the idea is if we can have students making one year's growth in one year's time and ideally be, can we stop that ten percent from sliding out? Feel like we can make that improvement. And that brings us to these um EFRS dashboards we have. And I'm gonna make a gamble, because if I move my mouse in the wrong spot, a student's name will pop up. So when I pull it up, I need to make sure that I'm really clear, because I don't want to have this, I can't have a student's name show. Um, so when you're looking at this, this is actually showing us who's making one year's growth in one year's time. To an effect size of point zero to point one, so if you see green, so if you're looking at all subject levels, elementary and middle school. We're staying in green, it means on average, our students are earning learning one year's worth of information in one year's time. Based off of in previous historic assessment years where students were at. And that's really what we want our priority to be. We're sitting just below that average marker point. So we're noticing we're sitting at a negative point one two, a negative point one five. We're not to a low growth, which is a point three to a point five nine. So we're still losing a bit of students, but we're not losing students, not hemorrhaging students. When you go to grade level, we can see areas where we're outside of that area, when you get over to the um. Page six. Six second gives you the mathematics score. We'll notice group five is actually outperforming, so we're. Years growth in one year's time. As far as up ELA, okay, seven. Way we can see this now, every dashboard is we take. Historic data. And it looks at his student historic data, looks at where a student is at, takes their assessment scores and shows us. Is this student on track to learn one year's information and on track to learn one year's worth of information? And they call it the river, and if this loads, I will show you the river. So this is that kind of main dashboard, it tells you, are we on track for our student growth area? Notice like in first grade, so when I pull up our winter. I need to put my mouse way over here. Students within those blue lines are making one year's growth in one year's time. Students under that line. Are below the one year's growth in one year's time and students above the second blue line are learning more than. And students above the second blue line are learning more than a year's worth of information. So then if I hover over, it'll actually show us specifically who our students are. So then we can identify what students are not learning, all of what we want them to learn. So we can begin prioritizing information. So if we have a student who's above academically advanced, that's what you see on the right. So those two yellow lines kind of shows us that average. If they're to the far right, it'll let us know who is an advanced student. Who also is not learning one year's information in one year's time. This is far left, who was a student that was remediated, but is also still not learning one year's information. Or maybe some of those students are outperforming. And it gives us a chance to begin looking at, how can we ensure that students are still getting the best? You know, the best of that learning error, and what students are there and how can we begin building intervention? So this is the entire first grade. You'll notice second grade from all assessment to winter assessment has moved up. This gives us kind of a number of factors to see how are we moving on those progress indicators. Notice third grade was not making the red. We've actually still improved, so I'll take that. As we're always improving. And I do have a write-up from Craig and Heather on kind of our plan as for third grade is our kindergarten there since COVID. So it's one of those years that we want to have a plan in place to continue to accommodate. Questions now, like you said, as we've been launching this grade book, a lot of questions have always come up. What do you mean by one year's growth in one year's time? How am I supposed to do that? It's. We just don't want students to continue getting further behind. Because that's kind of where you start seeing academic fall off. Like I said, our teachers do a great job. But the student is an eighth grader, that's nine years of education. And if that's, we're losing 10% a year and we're adding on to that in over nine years, that number adds up. That's why we didn't want to make this a priority. Questions on our data? These data reports, I already just finished our second round. Our college data just got updated last week, so I do not have this in the really fancy online. Do not do WALK-IT's data. Our WALK-IT's kindergarten pre-K scores have come down. But Eric and I want to dig into that before we present it to the board. Because one of our things that we noticed in the historic data is. We run about 100% of our students have received early learning services, not an IAP, not an IP. Or to stand, past WALK-IT, that's about close to 100%. Students on an IP, that's probably a problem that come in that are earning like our special education preschool lower. So we would like to see that if we saw a drop in our WALK-IT scores. We also want to see how does that line out with students also receiving early learning services? Because we, we know that our WALK-IT's pass rate and our early learning service rate is really tightly confined. A chance to see. That write-up, Eric? Let me try to capture our conversation correctly. So I mean, Paul, I appreciate it. We are getting a lot of encouragement. We have prioritized the classroom. Questions go, can we get this? Can we get this? Can we get this? Well, 82% of schools fund better, 82% of schools fund better than we do. And we've made a point to ensure that we have small class sizes, lower than the average. To ensure that that's where our money is going. Because we do feel that that's the best investment. And we do think it's paying off with an incredible return on investment. That our students are actually learning a lot throughout performing the state. So I do feel strongly that we should continue investing in our classrooms and our teachers. And it'd be great to have the other things that our priority should always be, invest in the classroom. All right, next on the list is 4,000 policies without changes.
These are just for your review. If you guys want to make changes to them, let me know.
Yeah, I'm looking at these ones. These ones are just really our, our changes if you guys want to. Yeah, cross-reference, kind of these schools that I cross reference. Policy 4200, change parent access safe and orderly learning environment. That one has some changes.
It updates references, add family involvement.
Mainly on here to take a look at, and we don't have to have these on discussion either. And then we can go from there to how we wanted to. Talk about when we go through first reading anyway, so I don't know. It makes sense necessarily to put them on here and talk about it, then go and then talk about it again. Or we can just slide it, you know.
Yeah, just like starting, first reading, just say.
Yeah. And then discuss it. And then if we decide to change something, this goes back to first reading here anyways, so I don't. If you have any thoughts on those, let me just know and then we can kind of go from there, I guess. Especially if you have a comment that might want to discuss them. All right, policy 4210, changes regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises.
This one updates RCW, but there are all sorts of options for to add the pink section to make it a little more strict.
From what I can tell of other districts, not that we have to, but the other districts have adopted more strict 1 and 2 in the purple. So something to think about. I think it looks like we're not required to, but it's just. So I don't know, does anybody have any thoughts on that for moving forward? Because we put it on first reading, candidates need to know whether we want to add those or not. I cross-referenced Holman, Montesano, and Tom Water. Yes, I want to say those I don't think so up to date yet. Tom Water says, Tom Water is.
We have some straight to the.
Yeah, right. For those of you that are not following this, the options are. One is no district employee may bring a firearm or dangerous weapon onto any district property without prior authorization of superintendent. And two is no person of entry renting, leasing, or otherwise being granted the right to temporarily use a district property. May possess or allow its guests to possess firearms or dangerous weapons on district premises. Provision does not extend to property rented or leased as personal. Those out. So it sounds really like state law. So I personally have. Pretty much no matter what, yeah. Yeah.
That's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
There's, yeah, there's other board policies that create exclusions for. Marksmanship team, the shooting range two doors down from our library. So there's actually provisions that if marksmanship is part of your curriculum, the state accounts for that. It's obviously the state accounts for it, the current state training, the state accounts for it.
Which is interesting because, I mean, it already says that further down in the policy itself. Funny that it's right here in those two provisions, because it talks about shooting laws or hunter safety. It actually specifically talks about that, so.
It would be difficult if I have hunter safety, if I'm having.
Yes. Some provisions, but I can set up. All right, so we'll move those on to action items for next time for first reading. So that brings us to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Yeah, let me read you a little bit of it. We welcome your comments, which are important to us. All comments are limited to three minutes. It's helpful for the board. If you give us your name, please address your remarks to the chairperson. Note that we will not be entering any dialogue, obviously know that. And the purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the board, and above you. So thank you. Okay, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, I had zero intention of talking, but because this is so far down the agenda and I've heard a lot of stuff. I now have words. I'm Megan Porter and I have an elementary school kid and a middle school kid. And there's a lot of good stuff happening in this school district, right? But only if I came here, that's the only way I know there's good stuff happening. There's no communication about what's happening at the school. The district has an awful reputation amongst the community. I talked to other parents, you know, I talked to kids. The school district has a really, really bad reputation. It's toxic. And if you're wanting to pass any kind of levy, any kind of bond. It's never going to happen until that reputation changes in this community. It's just not going to. And if you don't have somebody telling the good stories about what's happening here. It's, the reputation's ever going to change. I love this town. I graduated from this school. I'm raising my kids here. I'm invested in this. And so listening to the good stuff only in this tiny little space is very frustrating to me. And hearing that you're going to try to maybe go out for a levy, it's never going to pass. You know that. It's never going to pass until the reputation of the school changes. And that's not ever going to happen until somebody comes and talks about the good stuff. So that's just kind of my feelings on that. And that data that you're going to put out there, I really, really, really recommend you don't. And the reason why I say that is there's zero context around that data. The people aren't going to understand what you're talking about. If you just put these data points out there, if you're not talking about it and saying what it actually means. People are going to make up what it means. And so I just caution you in putting out a dashboard full of numbers that nobody has any clue what they need. So those are my thoughts for today.
Thank you, Megan, for your comments and your help. Anybody else? Public comment?
I'd like to make a public comment.
Yeah.
I'll know the thing too later, but same thing, just sitting at the meeting. I think that it's important that I say, I know I don't look like it. I don't spend all my money trying to look cool for the neighbors, but my time is very, very valuable. Not only do I run a business myself, but I also have a five-year-old son at home. That wants his dad to be there right now as I'm hanging out. I'm volunteering my time to help with the booster club here in town. My daughter does not need help from a booster club. I'm doing it for the other kids that need help. We don't have a lot of extra money flowing around, especially into the track program. I was really excited that you were bringing up data points and I thought, I really enjoyed hearing those. I thought they were informative. I can understand if it, you know, may be confusing at times, but I like data. I compile some of my own. Second to football, track and field puts out the most scholarships for college in the country. They're almost 20% more than basketball. They're almost 20% more than baseball. And if you combine the other bottom six, there are almost as many scholarships for track as there are. And this is male and female, combining both. That being said, I wanted, I wanted to say that I think that going forward, just as a general thing. It would behoove the community as a whole to look at that and say, hey, you know. We have a shot here. This is a sport that you don't have to be, you can beat anybody from any walk of life and come in there and do it. You can excel at one thing and it's the least amount of money to get to that elite level of any sport. You don't need to have a community pool. You don't need to have the best baseball fields and all the bats and balls. You don't need to go do travel sports. You can literally go down to anywhere and run and be training for track, you know. And I just want to say, you know, that it's one of those things where I did track in school. And I saw a lot of my classmates that went on to higher learning, come back to our community with their degrees. And build the community up, make it a better place. I think that it's so, I just want to say, but I wanted to say too that I think we need to streamline the process for volunteers. If there's any way you guys can work on that, you know, two hours of my night's tough, especially when I took two hours off early to get here. If there was a way where we could do it via email, you guys could approve it and email us back saying, hey, we've approved your fundraiser. Just because, and I understand, you know, I've been in here before. You guys have to check all the boxes. There's a lot of things to take into consideration. One of those we'll discuss in a minute. But I just wanted to say, Paul, like one, I really hope that moving forward, you guys really give tracks some consideration. They need a little love there. But also I hope that the volunteers that are going for all booster clubs. Get a little consideration as far as just making it a little easier on us. Because I've spent a lot of time this year. And it's okay. I want to. I love doing it. I love these kids. They're great kids. I mean, it's a great community. It's really awesome. But me trying to hand this off to someone else in a year or two is like, ah, I feel like it's like, you know. You're trying to hand off a time bomb to someone like, you know what I mean? I'm trying to be cognizant of the fact that other parents in the community have to do it.
I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? All right, unfinished business, approval of EHS baseball boosters fundraiser.
So we have submitted the food handlers permit, the concession license that we needed. So everything has been submitted to Tanya. Hopefully it's now approved.
It's been moved as second to approve the EHS baseball boosters fundraiser. Is there any discussion? Any none? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, new business, approval of Alma Track Booster Fundraisers.
Okay, so this, we're basically doing the same fundraiser that volleyball did at the beginning of the year, which is a scratch ticket board. I have an example to show you guys and see. It's basically a raffle, $10 a ticket. They put $400 and we'll put $400 in scratch tickets on a board plus a $100 bill. We're going to run it through a program, software program called Zappi. So this will be all digital. The kids will be able to go with a QR code or a web address that they can give to friends and family. So the kids won't be handling any money. It'll all be going directly through the website, which will also be great for both keeping. Because it'll be, you know, we won't have to keep track of how many tickets we're selling. It'll, we can put a limitation on that. I am aware from the volleyball booster that there's a limit on how much income we can bring in. The only thing you didn't have clarity on was that if we're in, we knew it was 5,000. But we didn't know if it was 5,000 we're allowed to profit off of it or if it was.
Go to the Washington State Family Commission website.
Right.
You can get all that information.
I looked for that everywhere. I mean, I was on there scouring, I couldn't find anything about raffles.
Guaranteed it's there.
It is.
It is there. There's also a help button that you can, so I can actually email them. And they'll, and just ask them specifically what it is.
Okay.
And they're really good about giving right back to you.
Okay.
And they'll actually probably even send you the whole link on the raffle ticket.
Right. So at our board meeting, we just voted to sell 500 tickets because we weren't sure if we could do 550. So we just kept it at that number that volleyball did.
And it'll explain to you too how you have your tickets numbered, one through 500 and.
And through the software program, they actually will number the tickets for us. Then it allows us to add in question fields, so we'll be able to, you know, get all their permit information, everything like that. And then it'll actually allow us to.
The only other thing I would caution on is having the kids get all this information. As a booster club, parents should be.
Well, and we're, you know, we're.
I totally understand boosters and yeah.
Right. Oh, I think I've got it covered. I've got about 20 hours of this, so who do I bill, right? About 150 an hour right now, so I think they're getting a pretty good deal on me at track over there. So the next thing, you guys, we had tabled at my last meeting, I believe it was in April. Because you guys. Um, because you guys wanted us to carry a general liability insurance policy for some of our out of school activities. We have that ball rolling. I've been working on it for six months. I mean, I've. Back and forth with insurance agents. I think I finally have one that can help us. It's actually here in Alma. So we're just waiting on him to get our quote to us.
So sometimes you do it through like USA Track and Field.
Right.
Event, and then they have fundraising events.
Right.
And then you can do it from them and it's from bucks.
Right.
Um, I don't know if that works.
Are you talking about Mike Stilwell, the farmer's insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, he's probably about the same.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and the thing is, is that I didn't know what we were gonna be doing, so I didn't know what I was asking them to cover. So now this year, we're at a little bit more of a head start. So like, we're trying to do a dump tank heat on the street. We're doing the Easter egg, you know, we're gonna do a car wash. And so I was able to give him a list of these things, give him a start and finish date for all our events, and then he can give us a quote. Um, and our thought was just to cover, if we're over covered, fine. If we don't get approved for some of those things.
We've been having a lot of conversations too in a lot of our groups because what happens is if you're a five oh one C three nonprofit, our insurance doesn't extend to you.
Right.
And then that's why you get to have it, but we've talked to some groups going, hey, this is a lot of work. Like, we've been shoring up our process to give groups now their ASP budget accounts, we're thinking that out. Sometimes it's like, I just need to get something going.
Right.
Um, I know Mr. Clark has been looking hard on that with Kelly, his assistant, on how we can shore up. Uh, just to use the ASP process because our insurance does extend if it goes into ASP.
Right.
Okay.
And I, yeah, and Tim Lizell's been really good about explaining all that to us. We haven't actually filed for five oh one C three yet. We were kinda getting all our ducks in a row because it's a big filing fee. I mean, I think it's around three hundred.
Zero now, you're spending six hundred, so that's actually.
Yeah, well, it's six hundred if you're doing a certain volume, but we're gonna be low volume, so. You know, uh, but that being said, you know, we are actively hopefully getting a quote from insurance. This is my fifth.
If you do need ASP though, our insurance extends to ASP.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I believe Tim's gonna be using that for the camp that they do. So, and that just will be them collecting the funds, not us. Um, but either way, I just wanted to let you guys know, we take the insurance thing very seriously because. Tanya was very nice about scratching all of them off when I had no for insurance there.
I just.
And be like, you can't get them approved until you have insurance.
It's what I mean, yeah, if I can make your life easier on that. We really are trying to make everybody's life easier on it, whereas we're shoring up the process.
Yeah, and I say that only because I just know that you guys are really busy working hard. So just from a parent perspective, it's like, hey, if we could streamline this part of it, it would be great.
Just you know, also, as I know, track paid for my first years of college.
Right on.
But I had to, but I had to run a sub fifty quarter mile.
Oh, wow. You worked for it then. Yeah. You know, that's why I say it's a, it's something that I really feel like this community, what they realize how valuable it is on that long term. They, you know, it is, it's, it's a really good sport. Again, you get all walks of life there, you know, you get kids that are gonna go places and, you know. Some of these kids are maybe gonna be working at NASA someday, et cetera, so. Um, but that being said, uh, the scratch ticket raffle's starting date is gonna be March, Tuesday, March eleventh. And the finish date will be Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, and that will be the day we do the drawing. Uh, we do have a, a Facebook page, so we're gonna spread to the parents that will do a live drawing on that Facebook page on that evening. And then we'll deliver it to whoever in person. Barring that they're like out of state or something. Um, the first one volleyball did, my cousin from Portland won, so I had to drive it down to it. But yeah, we, you know, we'll, we're gonna make sure that whoever that winner is is notified and given the prize that day.
And moved and seconded approved the Alma Track, uh, boosters fundraiser. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those posting name, question case. Of course, enrollment.
Enrollment, well, we're up. We're up, uh, it was just on the right page. I'm debating sharing, but I think you all have it. We went from fifteen, eighteen in our general ed and ALE to fifteen twenty-five. Um, our big numbers are up in our, uh, our, it's like on our eleventh.
Open doors went down a little bit and that flipped over to the regular enrollment.
We're up in the eleventh grade. I just wanna point out, I contributed. Because, uh, my daughter flew back from her year in Japan. She got in on like February second. And then Eric was really clear. She has to be there on that first day to counter, so I told her, you don't get it without a from jet lag. You have to go to school immediately. So we did contribute to ensure that we got one of those eleven graders in, so. Um, but yeah, we're, we're going up after they change its semester, so. ALE is also continuing to go up and. It's a good February.
Right, budget, Lisa.
Hey, you guys have your reports? Sorry. Um, any questions on the report? I made mine very short, sweet and to the point. Fund balance is running about five points to you right now. We are starting to drop a little.
I think, uh, Michael's asked to have those, would you say over two months?
Yeah, but I would like, like, I think where you're going with this is big picture, right? Like. If we're gonna start putting together, uh, you know. I'm starting to put together the big picture, start telling the story and, uh, like, getting some of that news out as far as where the district's at and how much money we're gonna have to, to spend to do some modernization projects. Or where, where we're gonna be at, because like, there's a lot. With that, depending on how we as a board decide if we wanna go financially, there's lots of different options and they're writing more options out of our, after this legislative session, so. But I think we'd like.
We're in the initial two hundred thousand that needs to be covered from really.
Correct. And that's what I was, I think I was kind of alluding to is I don't think we can wait to, uh. To go off the taxpayers, ask for a roof. I think we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to come up with that money. If that means we're gonna have to come out of and make a discussion on where that's coming from, we need to have that discussion because it.
I think that's right now, I mean, when, how do we make time to have that discussion?
Just add it to the next agenda. Do you wanna have it at the next meeting or do you want, Jeff, I mean, we can build out bids and kinda pull together what it would cost and.
For the roof?
Yeah.
What do you need?
Yeah, I mean, I have the budget number, so the, it would just be like, if we're gonna do it, then we go out to seal.
Do you want to, Lisa, Lisa, how long do you want to work for Jeff? How long would it take to kind of pull together? What you.
I'm sorry, I have two state audits going on right now. I've gotta do a budget revision for all the grants that people have put in for.
It's not something we would start.
Sure, we'll just fit it in anywhere.
It's not something we would start work on until the summer.
Well, like, we'd have to do the bid.
But we've gotta do the bidding, so we would have to do it. I would say if we did it. I'm trying to think, maybe mid-March, I could pull it together.
So the second.
Um, once I feed all of the state auditor enough information.
So second board meeting in March, should we come up with that?
I think we could by then. I, I would wanna meet with finance committee prior.
Yeah, it's kinda why I wanna get the ball rolling, because I remember talking about that, and I'm thinking the summer and bid process, I was really getting done in the summer, I'm gonna have to. Make a decision or not make a decision, it's gonna end up soon.
I guess it feels pretty much sure to have to do all the work to find bid, to go through the bid process if we have a, if a decision.
Well, you're not gonna go to the bid process, right? Or are you just?
I mean, we're not gonna do anything till you guys decide what you want to.
So could you, before that, would it be possible to just get some options? Like, I, I don't even know what our options are, like, right? Like, I, I've sort of discussed them with.
Well, just so you know, school districts cannot go to a bank and get a loan, okay? That's not an option. So, um, for us, pretty much is going to be having you guys rescind the resolution for the minimum fund balance. Make it lower so I can free up fund balance and then I can use that out of our fund balance, which two hundred thousand. Um, pull it out and do the roof.
Um, we're basically overriding our, our rule.
Yeah.
But just for this temporary.
Yeah, it's a temporary, okay.
Is there any state money that we can apply for for the roof since it's more kind of out of nowhere type of emergency?
Not that we would get instantly, um.
I'll, I will call Scott Black.
Yeah, we can call him. There's usually SCAP money, but that has to go through le- legislation.
You're redoing SCAP right now?
Yeah.
The whole SCAP system is being.
It doesn't fill out the timing is.
Yeah.
No, I just thought, I mean.
And the problem, the problem with a roof is it's like a, it's a wear and tear thing, so it's not, like, the emergency repair fund is like a boiler goes to put.
Yeah.
Out of nowhere. Um, whereas it's like a, a thirty-year roof that really only gets you twenty years in Washington, they know those are gonna fail, so.
If I didn't ask the question, somebody else would ask why I didn't ask.
Right.
The answer to it, so.
But I, I will, I will.
See if there. Wanted to start the conversation, so I'm really glad.
So I guess I'd like that to be on the next, or the tenth, I think.
Second board agenda.
You guys are gonna have to tell me what you want me to do. And then we can just get it ready to go and total approval can be at that second meeting.
Do you wanna handle that at, uh, Jennifer?
Yeah, and I was gonna, well, I think what the reports too, I, I've been doing agenda preps with, uh, Chris kind of a week, Friday before we have our meeting. Um, anybody's welcome to come, obviously, as long as we don't have a quorum, so if somebody else wanted to come and join me in that, so you'd have a discussion if you wanted to, we could probably talk about that and. And, and maybe we could pull, I don't know, you said like you're busy, but maybe we can pull the two of them really fast and get some ideas to come to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
The next one or the, uh, the second one? We do with the Friday before the board, so when Michael and I, and I, I was up at Gates Foundation this last Friday. So Stephanie, you wanna do this next one coming up?
I think we.
Yeah.
And then Candace will send you an invite for the next one.
Thank you.
So that takes us, see, has anybody got any other comments or questions for the budget report for Lisa? Okay, uh, go to the order.
I have, yeah, seven names for our first, uh, that always gathered for us. Holly Murphy has gathered us seven names. For us to be with or our day in the life, it would be the first three periods of the day. I just need to know like what board members are able to make it, so we can start doing, reaching out, confirming those students, and then we're gonna start reaching out and confirming with parents tomorrow. Um, because we just need to make sure parents know, hey, this will be with your child.
When was the date?
Friday, this Friday, this Friday.
Yeah.
So.
This is twenty-eight.
So this Friday, if you're able to make a day in the life, I need to know.
Yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I'll be there.
Candace, we will call the verdict at tomorrow. I'll be with a student. Um, and then actually also having our superintendent advisory. So Peyton did me a solid. We have a student who is also gonna be in the superintendent advisory meeting that I'll be following. So, and then I'm gonna have a survey that'll go out, kinda write down notes on how your experience has been as you. Had to go, as you got to experience school, as our students have experienced.
Can you, uh, I would love to be able to experience at least part of lunch.
Okay.
I feel like that's the area that in the community, it would be good for us to have some first chance. I know it's first through third, at least.
Do you wanna get lunch, buy you lunch?
Uh, you know, I came to try by mail, but, um, or maybe if I'm lucky, my world was happy.
Yeah, that's fine. That's not an issue. And it's definitely true.
Backing to lunch?
So Chris, this is first through third period.
That's right.
Okay, um, can I like, you know.
Candace.
Candace tomorrow.
How about?
Am I, I might be able to modify my schedule. I've worked.
Providence Board of Representatives tomorrow. Well, is there anything you wanna add? You don't have to add anything. You can add everything, anything on our plan.
I think that going to lunch is a good idea to explore that social effect and like. Being really kind and seeing what that means, like, how people respond to what the food is. Um, the culture in the country, what you decide to eat, opening up the library, having the early bird. I suggest if you do go to check out the early bird, it's a student room store by a marketing class. A lot of students really enjoy it. Um, I think there's a lot of class space that you'll see in lunch, in the freedom of lunch for students who are really want. But, uh, it's a lot different than what I think what you see in classrooms. Also going with you, you get to experience our equal time, so I think that's a good proof for you guys, which is starting to be, uh. Live stream announcements.
I'm standing over there, yeah, we're live streaming our announcements now to all of our teachers' classrooms and. It's basically like a good test.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a big question, but yeah. When I was in your shoes, we had the same thing.
Eating sport?
Yeah, yeah. So that was, I was thinking about it the other day for some reason, because I, I think I was in the building and the announcements came behind it, I was like, oh, that'd be so cool if they were live again. So that's awesome. And thanks for sticking it out and staying in this entire time.
We were, other news is, uh. Um, Jeff Catalin, honestly, won a Washington State Wrestling Purge of the Year. And we also have a state champion of Xavier Esposito. So we have a, uh, a state champion and the wrestling purge of the year, so I think those are just incredible things to celebrate this last week after wrestling state.
And just to add to that, I, I think it's been about ten years since. Oh, it's. You know. Top ten finish, let's say, six hundred. And a lot of our wrestlers, I've noticed, are young, they're freshmen, sophomores that had to compete at state. There was a little team this year. Uh, there was no regionals, they went sub. Uh, regional districts, right to the state, but I think afforded a lot of kids opportunities to wrestle to them. That may have never gotten that opportunity. And our young wrestlers, the, the future looks bright for our wrestlers.
You know, it's good. Jeff's, like, done an incredible job, and I think he's just done a great job because of how proud we are. Does, we'll go to the order.
Just spring sports start next week, so welcome up for another round.
We had a great choir concert last night, it was good, I didn't see that back and happening.
That was Full House.
Yeah, it looked like it was very well.
Uh, it's always fun to watch the, the kids, right? My son, he didn't really want anything to do with it, but he's, he got up there. He's saying he had his hood on and stared at the floor, but I mean, he did it though. I was super proud because he did not want to go, so I was really glad to see that. He, he went, he enjoyed it afterwards, you know, he's like, oh, it was kind of fun being up there with my friends.
Yeah.
Done doing. So it was good to see. It's funny, every way back. Other than that, uh.
Make a motion while you're during the meeting.
That's okay.
And move and second during the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.